Good morning, this is the Knox County Commissioners's regular session on August twenty first, two thousand twenty five. We have a job and family services, child support statistics and reports with us for us today. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, I'm Scott Boone, I'm the Director of Knox County Job and Family Services. And I have our child support administrator, Derek Lo with us. And she's going to tell us about all the good work that's going on in Knox County JFS Child Support, as well as some other details about Child Support Awareness Month and so on. So take it away.
Hello, everyone. So I wanted to start off with, this year marks the fiftieth anniversary of the Child Support Enforcement Program. So it was established in nineteen seventy five, so I thought that was a nice little thing that we've been around for fifty years. Also, August is Child Support Awareness Month, so we like to make the community aware of helping the children of Knox County, being financially supported by their parents. And a couple of things, or a few things that we did this month was First Friday. We had a table out there and we were on the square and we did a little activity with the community. We made a tree and I have pictures and we had little leaves and we had anybody that stopped by. They wanted to write what support meant to them and then put it on the tree branches. So we have that upstairs in our office and we're gonna show it off later after we lodge podge it, make it nice. And then we also have a table down here on the first floor that has information about our program and has some pencils and pens and stuff that anyone would like to take, they can. Also, I provided, I don't know if you guys have it or not, but I just provided a little key facts and goals about our child support program. And that our goals, you know, is to increase regular consistent support for the children by engaging both parents, coordinating with other programs, linking them with our Ohio Means Jobs Opportunity Knox, and setting and modifying orders based on their ability to pay. Also, August sixth was Wear Green Day for Child Support Awareness. We all wore green. And then we also had the Justice Bus come. And they are a, it's a free legal mobile clinic that comes and we've been having them for the past, I think this is the third year. They come and they park out front and you schedule an appointment. And if you have any questions or needing help with any type of paperwork, they're there, there's an attorney there to help them. And we served five or six individuals with questions regarding custody and child support related issues.
And you're, that's Thursday, August twenty eighth?
No, that, the Justice Bus that happened August sixth was for child support. But we also have the Justice Bus coming August twenty eighth. And that's gonna be at Opportunity Knox from eleven AM to three. And that one is more so focused on expungement, expungement. So anyone that may wanna seek information about how to expunge something on their record. They would, there's a QR, we have flyers around, we have it posted on our social media. And they can take a picture on, for the QR code and it'll go to their website and they can schedule an appointment. Couple other things I've got, I've presented, or I sent in, just to give an idea of Knox County, how we're doing performance wise. Ohio, as the state, our goal quite a few years ago was to hit seventy percent, seventy percent of payments coming in for current child support. And we've, as a whole, as Ohio, we've hit that, we've hit our goal of seventy percent. But we've also focused on Knox County and right now we're ninety seven percent. Or, I'm sorry, that's for paternity establishment, I'm sorry, for current support, we're at seventy six percent. So it's so above seventy percent, we're, we keep trying to do better and better every year. So I'm very excited and happy that we are keep going up higher in percentages to get our current collections.
Think the SEEK programs helped you with that some?
I think it has because we wanna try to assist people with knowing that there's, you know, opportunities to work. Especially with our deputies trying to help us engage the clients with working or push, kind of pushing, nudging them to work. And then also we have, you know, Opportunity Knox up the road, which is a great resource to help individuals find employment and help them with resumes and things of that nature and any type of training also. So our current support collections are not seventy six percent right about now. Our paternity establishments to get paternity done is ninety seven percent. To establish support orders, right now is around ninety four percent. And our RIRG collections, those are always usually a little bit lower because these are when there's no longer a current support order. It's just kind of the back pay and sometimes we have a harder time, but right now we're at about seventy percent. So I just wanted to go over some of our percentages with you. And then lastly that I have for you guys is I've done some work. I know we put out the annual report for two thousand twenty four, which had our numbers. But I did some adding and have our numbers for seven months in for twenty five. So as of July thirty first, we have collected four million, three hundred, three thousand, nine hundred, sixty five dollars and sixty seven cents for children in Knox County to help them financially.
Is that that seventy some percent, that's what that seventy percent brings or is that?
That's, well, that's include, I think that's including all of it. That's the RIRG payments and current support. And then I put in there our SEEK work program. So as of right now, we have four hundred and sixty seven active SEEK work cases. And as from January to July twenty five, for the SEEK work program participants, we've collected five hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and ninety nine dollars and sixty two cents.
So education. Do we charge like a collection or handling fee for any of these dollars, percentages?
Yes, yes, the agency does. We have a two percent processing fee.
So you are charging some types of fees as the money comes in?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then also for Knox County, we have a total of three thousand, one hundred and forty open cases for child support.
If there's multiple kids in a household, is that just one case for two kids or?
Correct, yes. If it's a same mother, father, and they have two or more kids, it's one case, yes.
Oh, you did talk about the August Child Support Awareness Month. You know, you did all that, you did that sheet without even seeing. Then you say you do have a photo of the support tree?
Yes, we have a couple photos. This was at First Friday. I didn't provide them to you because I hadn't.
Was there a lot of duplications or were they all a little different?
A lot of them were the same, like their family or their siblings, things of that nature. So yeah, we got some blue on and we put a stencil on that.
You're still finishing that recently?
Correct, that's theirs. I thought about lodge projecting it or something just so the leaves don't fall off. They're just a little, little blue thing, little blue dot.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
But we have the big mural tree right on the wall.
Yes, yes. I thought that was very, you know, the tree that grows and has different branches and things like that, yes.
What's the biggest difficulty for people to be able to pay that their support? Is it the lack of work or just don't care, not gonna give it anyway or?
I've heard a array of different things, but a lot of things might be, might be, you know, work is hard to find, maybe from their past record. So work is hard to find. People don't wanna hire them or it costs, it's too much with all my other bills that I have. Because the costs of other things have increased as well, so.
I have sworn for years, just my selfish, humble opinion, that when we put a non-being spouse for support in jail, I don't know what it accomplishes other than now nobody's getting any money and we're paying again for somebody who isn't paying support. And I always wondered why there wasn't a program and it would probably take some effort and some type of additional employee. As we all know, there's plenty of people hiring in Knox County that we couldn't escort them to a job. At least they're still generating money, you know, like a work release program at the jail. But it would take employees and effort to do that, but in the same aspect, maybe we get them back on the job train so that going forward, they know they can get a job and you know, support themselves and pay, pay their rightful dues.
Are we doing that for the people in jail because they have not paid?
We have, but we, we try and try and try until we can't.
Yeah, until it's all last resort.
I mean, we try the SEEK work program, we try to get people engaged.
You have to have support, you have to have willingness to do it.
Tried, we tried, you know, they don't just, when they go to court the first time, they get sent to jail, that's not how it works. So we give them multiple opportunities, timeframes to try to find employment to work. And then if they still, if there's just nothing, I mean, that's, that supports.
So as, as this goes on, let's say that Barry, I won't use Bill, doesn't pay his support and he ignores the opportunity to get a job that you're offering. How many times before, do they put him in jail before the penalty becomes so deep that it's a lesson learned instead of just you're in jail again for not paying support?
Well, it just depends. Sometimes people the first time is the lesson learned. But we've, we have taken, you know, there's first, second, and third contems. We have taken them, if people just are not willing or don't want to pay, that's what happens. But some of them learn on the first time. And they go and get a job.
I would hope, but you know, there's always that.
Yeah, so we really try other options first before the contems, but I mean, we, there has.
You only do so much, right?
It's a court order, it's court order. So we're following, child support is following court orders. So we're doing what the court has ordered.
And as you said, it's, it's, we don't make a recommendation as whether or not people are incarcerated or receive that consequence. And that's up to the judicial system and I've talked to Dareth where when you get two, three, four hearings deep, the court's almost at a point where they, I mean, they have to offer some level of consequence. Or else it just goes on for infinity and nobody's helped. But I agree with Barry. Incarcerating people, taking their driver's licenses away, then where's the money gonna come?
Well, that creates a bigger issue, I think, because now you've got somebody running around who doesn't have driver's license and is trying, and still driving as we well know. And then working for cash for somebody under the table in order to make ends meet. So nobody really benefits from that whole scenario.
Yeah, well, and again, you mentioned, you know, the SEEK work, our deputies engage folks as much as they can. And they take them up the road, as Dareth said, to, you know, if we can lead them to the water, then it's up to them. How they respond, but our shares, our deputies are really engaged. They, they're involved in all of our activities and they, they do a great job in advocating for people to.
I know the deputies who were involved, they seem to be proud of what they do for.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Did we use any city police officers for any of this course at all the?
Not that I was, no, no.
There's a lot of people would know that the difference, so it is only the sheriff's department that's in that area.
Correct. Well, we'll let you know about the photo contest. Dareth is very competitive and she, she got, got a little bit upset when, what was it, Tuskoros won two years in the middle, something like that.
You're making her mad.
Well, I know, so I shouldn't, I shouldn't bring that, but we did win last year. And she's got a great idea for this year and Andrew helped us with that together. So we'll let you know the outcome.
Perfect, that's great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I actually didn't give it to her, she just.
All right, have a great day.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. We do have three resolutions that Andrew that I'm gonna put on the agenda for the day, so if not hold them up. The first one is a school resource officer contract with East Knox School District. This is for the twenty five, twenty six school year and the amount of thirty three thousand, five hundred dollars. I do think this is up slightly from last year's, but we really haven't taken a look at those in a while. And so I provided some information to Sheriff on what the actual loaded cost is for a deputy. And obviously the county and the county general fund through the Board of Commissioners covers the bulk of that, school resource officers, but we did have to increase that somewhat as the bulk of those officers has gone up. So that's for thirty three thousand, five hundred.
And that was for East Knox?
Yes, and then East Knox has asked last year and I believe this year for a second SRO and we only subsidized the first SRO. So for the second one, it would not exceed seventy thousand dollars for twenty five and twenty six. And so that's on there.
For two?
Yeah, they would like two of them.
For seventy thousand for both?
For the, for the second one, it's seventy thousand, the first one's thirty three thousand, five hundred. Yeah, because we don't, you know, we, we don't have the capacity to put, you know, multiple out there at that rate. So that's what those are, so that's ready for your signature.
This resolution is for both of those?
Yeah, it's just for the contract for the twenty five, twenty six, it's been signed by the school board, the superintendent and the sheriff and it's ready for your signature.
And then the thirty three thousand and the seventy thousand is what the school is gonna be?
That's correct, that's our, that's their, that's their portion, yeah.
Any other questions?
We provide obviously the officer, the vehicle, the equipment, all of that comes in and for that first officer, they, they pay thirty three, five of that. So it's ready for some.
Take a motion then?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Those in favor, say aye. I believe that just means one signature on that one for Bill aside. Then we have a utility permit. Or, oh, I'm sorry, this is not a utility permit, this is a contract application for payment. This for the county engineer and this is for McConnell Contracting. And this is for two hundred, two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. I was looking on here, what if this got, this was for project, that's funny. McConnell was doing. This was for materials. Box beams. Those box beams must be for their project, so that's ready for approval, signature, so.
Yes.
In those favor, say aye. And then the second one is also a contractor application of payment for the county engineer, eighty thousand, nine hundred, ninety dollars and forty cents. And this is for Griffin Pavement Spraying. Motion to approve.
I second.
In those favor, say aye.
That's, that's it.
It's, and then we, we have the dog warden coming, right? Can you see out there?
I think he's here.
You have a bill?
That one you guys already signed that, got that down at the auditor's office. Morning, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, Brian, thank you.
Good morning.
Why don't you ever bring like Jack Hannah would bring one of his animals? Start doing that. The puppy was, the puppy was way too much. I bet that dog didn't last long, it was like, is it still there, that puppy?
The one that he was used to pick?
Yeah, he, no, it's been adopted.
Oh, yeah, I didn't say it.
The cutie.
Yeah, I had, I was all set to see if you'd bring a dog in here, what?
My support me?
Yeah. Well, Brian, thank you for being with us today.
So the monthly report for July two thousand twenty five, we had a total of forty seven dogs come into the shelter. Twelve of those were under surrenders, thirty four were strays, one was a seized custody dog. And then we had a total of thirty nine dogs that leave the shelter, ten were adoptions, nine were euthanazies, eighteen were returned to owner and two were transferred out to a rescue. It should be noted that all nine dogs euthanized in July were at the owner's request due to the dogs being aggressive, having a bite history or for medical, severe medical reasons. As of Thursday, August twenty first, two thousand twenty five, there are twenty nine dogs at the shelter and twenty six are available for adoption. One is currently on hold as evidence for an animal neglect court case. One has been adopted and waiting to have surgery next week and one is on a ten day bite quarantine. Out of the twenty nine dogs at the shelter, nine are under surrenders, nineteen are stray dogs and one was seized from its owner because of animal neglect. There's a total of eight dogs on the adoption floor that have been at the shelter for over sixty days. And a total of nine citations were issued in the month of July. Deputy Brian Weiser issued one citation for failure confined and Deputy Tyler Moore issued five citations for failure confined, two citations for failure license and one citation for falsification.
Well, Brian, I guess you update the Commissioners on your first big dog pool day.
Yeah, so last Sunday we had our, our Pooch Plunge or Dog Swim that we had open to the community to come and have the dogs swim in the pool at the High Watha Pool. The city was able to, we were able to work with the city and have them close the pool down a little bit early so that we could have our four-legged friends come in and hang out in the water and I think everything went well.
And that was the last day of pools.
Yes.
That was the last day of pools.
So Brian, when you say nine were euthanized at owner's request?
Yeah, so.
Do you charge for the euthanasia?
We do, yeah, yeah, we do, we do charge a fee for a owner to bring their dog into the shelter and have it euthanize. It's significantly less than if they were to potentially go to a vet's office. So some people use that as a resource to humanely euthanize their dogs.
So the dogs that went swimming, was that the dogs from the pound?
So none of the dogs from the pound, we actually did have one there that was a former dog shelter.
Okay.
A dog from the shelter that they're under them, so.
Do you have a tenant's record as to how many still without?
Yeah, we had forty four dogs come and thirty seven people, so some dogs brought a couple, brought more than one dog. But, yeah, I think it was a success.
They all swim friendly?
Yeah.
And we did have.
When did you get donations?
Four hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, we had four hundred and fifty dollars towards the people entering the pool. So it's just like an entry fee.
And, and I think we wanna know, you know, Brian had asked about that animal care fund and you had passed the resolution a couple of months ago, maybe, to request it and the state did approve us to create that animal care fund. And so are you gonna be able to put this money, will be the first donation into that animal care fund?
All the money that we raised from the Pooch Plunge will be going to our new Knox County.
That's a direct to you.
Yeah, it goes to the animal care fund that we will be using to do surgeries and different things for the dogs at the shelter.
I think we've had issues where some people wonder like the donations, what, what we would, what we use the donation for. So I mean, you know, Brian had that good idea to create that animal care fund. So now the only thing we will spend money, because the, when we requested that fund from the state, the only fun, funding that'll, or the only expenses that'll come out there are direct animal care, so food, medical care.
Expenses.
It'll be no administrative costs, no equipment, that kind of stuff. It's just for direct care of animals. So we hope that in the future, there will be more donations since we're saying that is, we have the dog and kennel fund that is the operations of the shelter, but then the animal care fund will be only for direct impact touching the animal, so.
Did you get any pictures of the dogs? See a picture?
Yeah, yeah, we posted some on our Facebook page, so we have a collage of pictures there and a little, a reel of videos of the dogs swimming, so.
So did you give out trophies for like the best die? We, we did fastest.
We're taking some ideas first, some things we can improve on next year, so one of those will be handing out trophies.
That's great.
I mean, if somebody wants to write a check, who should the check be made payable to? The animal care fund or the county or?
So I think they can still make it out to the Knox County Treasurer.
Yes, I was getting ready.
They'll just be put into the Knox County Animal Care Fund Act and we're gonna be posting some stuff on Facebook hopefully today about that, the new fund.
So the memo, the memo they will put.
They could put that animal care fund.
And Brian, we, I was thinking the other day, we probably need to talk to the Otters Office on that form when dog tags go out, there's a donation line on there. We need to make sure they put that money in the animal care fund now that we have that established. So we need to probably talk to Sarah at Jill about that to make sure all that money goes in that fund.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's worded differently on the form so we could change that. And then I, you know, I hope to send out like a little pamphlet with the dog renewal, talking about the fund as well and potentially like what some money's gonna go to or what we've used it on to just encourage people that if they're able to donate to that fund, it'll go directly to the dogs. I think there's always been a misconception that if you donate to the shelter that you're just paying for the lights or our salaries. But the money that they donated before still went to the dogs, it just was in the dog and kennel fund. Now it'll be directly in Knox County Animal Care Fund, so.
Cheryl, there is also a link on the website as of this morning that goes to a donations page.
And the cats aren't asking for equal time at the pool?
No, not yet. I don't know how many of the cats will.
They don't like water.
Figure you're saying.
Yeah, I'd like to move into executive session for a minute with Brian here.
Prepare for, I could say, issue when it comes to advertisement?
That was, you gotta figure out which one.
I've got my list.
Get in there. Mr. Adverse, one of those.
That should be confidential business information, economic development assistance, probably. One twenty one point two two, I think, support is probably.
Yeah, you must say that for Cheryl so she knows exactly.
It'll be one twenty one point two two G eight and two.
Well, I don't think they're gonna go in that, that has to be for economic development.
Maybe we can.
So we just have to have a discussion.
Yeah, I just have to, so I had a gentleman approach me with a flyer magazine.
And had mentioned that, are you familiar?
Yeah, I think that the gentleman came to our shelter as well.
Yeah, and what concerned me was all, he told me that he was gonna sell advertisements and he was gonna advertise for you for free. He told, I hope he told you the same.
Yes.
But he started boasting about how it was gonna be a nonprofit magazine.
Yeah.
And what scared me is he mentioned the dog shelter and apparently you, and in the same breath said nonprofit, like so is he using you for the nonprofit part of this magazine?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay.
From, from, from when he came into the gym and I keep calling his name, but he stopped in the shelter.
I have his flyers hanging on there, he gave me the flyer.
He mentioned that he wanted to start a magazine and send it out there in Knox County.
Apparently he used to own Knox County Shop and something, whatever that was called. Shoppers guy, shopper's guy or something funny. Yeah, shoppers. So, yeah, so it seemed legit to you?
Yeah, I mean, he just had mentioned that he wanted to post pictures of the dogs from the shelter and that no cost to us.
I'm good with that.
And so, and I thought that'd be great publicity for the community to get the dogs pictures out.
If you talk to him again.
Yeah.
Will you just ask him about the nonprofit?
He had told me that he was in the process of getting his own five oh one three C nonprofit certification. But, and that, that was something, something that he wanted to do, but I think that he had mentioned too that he was going to try to. Get sponsors, thanks for the magazine.
Well, that'd be some chip with, oh yeah, diet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just beware for you.
Go read it, yeah.
That's all I got.
And Jason, you have?
I have nothing else.
You got anything, Chuck?
So we'll take motion for adjournment then.
Should do a chair.
Second?
Stay adjourned.